Alright, I got about seven items. Alright, first one, I request, I requested the village board should pass and enforce the village ordinance requiring all property owners to mow their lawns every seven or eight days unless it's bad weather. I'd like to inform you that the village of Scotia has a law in place requiring all property owners in Scotia to mow their lawns every week. There's simply no reason why our village board can't have this kind of village law requiring all property owners to mow their lawns every seven or eight days. I would hope you think my proposal is consideration. The second one, I've been speaking to people about, we're requesting that our village board pass and enforce a village law having alternate parking on most village streets in lower Manette, Lewis Avenue, Glenwood, View, Beale, Clifford Roads, Brookside Avenue, Carter Canal Street Road, North and South Lions Avenue, and Irving Place because it's tough for motorists to pass parked vehicles when so, the streets are so crowded. But I would hope you will consider that option. We need to have that, we need to have alternate parking from most village streets in the lower part of this village. And the third one, while driving on Broadway, railroad avenue, and Hart Lane on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, I'm delighted to see that National Grid utility guy is finally repaired, one utility pool with the lamp, and two metal street light markers, namely, one. One utility pool with lamp, which they gotta put in a new lamp, so now it's on railroad avenue, which moved in and Clifford Road, so the lamp is finally lighted up. And B, one metal street light marker, number five on north side of Hart Lane, was there, that was finally repaired, so it's lighted up at nighttime now. And last, one metal street light marker, number twenty-nine on east side of Broadway, where you call storage buildings located. I'd like to thank National Grid utility guys for fixing one utility pool with lamp and two metal street light markers. Well done. Fourth one, while walking on west, on Upland Road, I observed one yellow dead end sign and one green sign with white letters at west end of Upland Road being largely covered by plants, weeds, brush, and vines, so please kindly have our public works guys remove brush, weeds, plants, and vines from the one yellow dead end sign and the green sign with white letters. Would they be able to get the job done? And the fifth one, while passing by Gaston Smith Park, I've been noticing and observing one basketball court has already been repaired, which I support and I approve, and I'm also glad that the unused tennis court was finally been repaired. In fact, they just installed a tennis net at the tennis court. In fact, when the contractors were repairing the tennis court, I personally witnessed it myself, and they've done a very good job, so just so you know, I do support and approve both of those recreation projects, you know, for several reasons, and I'm glad they've done a good job. And number six, as I read in the May second, twenty twenty, village board minutes, that the former price chopper plant on forty, four hundred and forty-four Broadway will be turned into various uses, like one beauty salon and one gym, which both will be open, plus Unity House will also be open. Now, I support the beauty salon and the gym for health, welfare, economic, social reasons, but unfortunately, I oppose Unity House for economic and budgetary, above all, for personal reasons. Now, the last one, while inspecting both restrooms of Manette Little League Baseball organization as part of my job as groundskeeper, I found that the women's restroom had soap dispenser, had no soap in it, so I reported this issue to Don Hannan through the Manette Police Department. And I was informed the next day that our public works guys put in one new soap bag in the women's restroom, soap dispenser. I'd like to thank our public works guys for doing their duty. Good job. Now, I thank you for your time, and thank you for letting me speak. I'm done.
Alright, Bill, just one comment as far as bathrooms, that's a DPW job, and particularly the ladies' room, you should not be in there. So, it's not
I didn't wanna go in there.
If you don't belong in there. If that's not part of your job, groundskeeper, baseball is over, your duties ended when the season ended.
I'm just letting you know about what was
You don't, do not go in the bathroom, the ladies' room.
I've already told one of the, by joint presence of Manette Little League Baseball, I can't go in the women's room.
And well, you just reported that you did, so you can stay out of there, you don't have any issues.
No.
It's not your job. That's why we have a DPW.
Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Hi, Chris Miles, five Kingston Street, and David Watson, five Kingston Street. We just wanted to discuss the opening of the short road from the north of Pearl. We recently got a home equity loan, and when we walked to your previous property, we explained that was a dead-end road. Since it's open, we've already had people driving quickly, not stopping, there's no stop sign there. There's kids who ride the bikes up and down that road. We walk our pets up and down the road. It's, it's a, it's a dangerous situation without having any kind of, you know, yield or stop sign. It's definitely gonna impact the market value of our home because it's no longer at a dead-end road with no access. We just wanna voice our opinion on if anything can be done in terms of slowing traffic down, any other options?
It does look to them, right? When you speak to Ryan, so I'll turn it over to you guys.
Just to give you a brief history about what happened, about a little over two years ago, we got complaints about the thing, the, the road, people driving fast and stuff. At the time, Chief LaCoss, who was the police chief at the time, and I went to eight hundred North Pearl, and there was a tenant there that had something to do with Homeland Security, and Homeland Security asked them to close the, that, that down. Because they, they thought it was a way that they, it could affect the building. That tenant has since left. So, they have another, what's happening now is, they, they lost one of their biggest tenants there, and they were trying to keep as many people, keep everybody there happy. They came to the management and said, we want the back access open, we're gonna think about leaving. And, you know, what they, they're afraid that if they lose another tenant, they're gonna have to close down the whole building, and unfortunately, it's one of those situations where we're kind of between a rock and a hard place because it's, the driveway is their property, it's not ours, and they have access to the road. But, um, speaking to the police department, there is gonna be an increase, I voiced everybody's concerns to the management, and I told them that, you know, we're gonna increase the police presence down there, and it's gonna, we're not gonna give any warnings, and I, you know, that, you know, the police will not gonna give warnings, they'll give right out tickets. As right now, that's the best we can do, but I'm not sure if there's anything else.
When you said there's no yield or stop sign, are you talking about at the corner of Kingston?
No, at, on the access road. Because what happens is they come out of that access road, which is, I don't know the distance, but, I mean, it's a good little cliff, and they just take the corner without looking, and as I said, the kids ride up and down that block, both from the apartment buildings and our neighbors. You know, we're walking our pets up and down there to the little park at the end of the street, you know, routinely, and I just, I'd hate to see something unfortunate happen, so if there's any way they can do
I can
You know, private road, can we put a stop sign or we can't?
I can have Abel put it on there, it's his property. I'm sure he would do that to make everybody happy.
Well, we can look too, because the village property is a certain portion of Kingston that goes into that street, so there's gotta be, you know, part of that has to be village property.
If you had to, we're fine putting on, on our property.
You know, we could look at that.
What about a, you know, a watch out for children sign type?
Seven, seven grade. We have to do for, I Oh, come on, so it's
Well, if we, if we
Children's sign would require a look, would it?
Well, we did the signs over by Jones Court, we did.
Um
Oh, God.
But if it's on their property, I think we can, if I can get Abel to do
If they agree to it, that might be nice if they can
Let me, let me talk to Abel tomorrow, and I'll ask him if he'll put a stop sign up there. I'm sure he would do it. I mean, he's, because he, you know, he did not wanna open it, but he's like between a rock and a hard place. They don't wanna lose tenants, but they wanna, they also wanna keep the neighbors happy, you know.
I talked to him, and then our next steps would be whatever we have to do for signage, and then if you can increase the presence down there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Typically, the hours are what that you're
Well, I mean, obviously, the kids are gonna be riding their bikes during the day, but at night, like, it's eleven o'clock sometimes at night when I'm walking the dog, you know, do her business in the night, and I walk down there, and I, the only concern I have with that being open at night is that there's, it's a wooded corner right below our property, so if there's any kind of mischief going on, there's now two ways for whoever is there to get out. You know, when I walk at night, a lot of times in the apartment buildings, there's people out there doing things they shouldn't be doing. So, to have that now carry down into the, into the building down below is gonna be a concern.
Right, but like you said, it's a private road, so it's not really, where we can tell them to close it, right?
Yeah, I just wanna piggyback off that. I'm actually one of their neighbors. I'm Jason Hoffman, I live on one Kingston, and a couple of the kids that they're talking about are my children, I have two small children, six and four. Ever since that access road was no longer accessible to people, there's just the overall quality of life around Kingston and the surrounding streets has really improved. We've seen a lot of people just walking around leisurely with no real worries since that has reopened, which I think has only been a few days. I personally, I get up, I'm out early in the morning, I'm home late from work. I have seen already multiple cars speeding out of there, not worrying about the stop sign. I've seen cars speed through and just speed right down that road. There's really no acknowledgement that there's even a stop sign there. I'm more concerned about the quality of life for everybody in the area along with the children. I think everybody around there now has become accustomed to there being no access there, so as I understand, rock and a hard place, I don't wanna see anybody, especially my own children, have anything happen on the street because of the people going through being reckless. I don't know if this is a possibility, because we were talking about stop signs, is speed bumps. If there's potential for maybe at least one speed bump, maybe even coming out or halfway between that access point and where the stop sign is, giving people kind of that notice that you do need to slow down. I, I do like the fact of a slowdown children in the area. I do wanna say though, that even though that access has now been put back, there is still the signs that say there are no, there's no access to eight hundred North Pearl, and nobody is really even acknowledging that. They're just going right through, and again, they're speeding right past that stop sign. And that, I'm not sure if you guys know, but that's a pretty tricky spot to either not stop and go right through and go to Amsterdam, or to not stop and take that quick hard turn up Hendrick. I, I've seen some cars before we closed it, when it was icy and the roads were slippery, I saw cars get pretty close to our property and our neighbor's property because they were not stopping at any of those stop signs, or even slowing down to make that turn.
We have talked about speed bumps in other areas, and the DPW's problem is plowing, but unless we do it on seasonal
They have removable ones.
Yeah, that's what, actually, Paul, Paul Zabinski was in my office, and that was one of the things that he suggested, because I brought up, because I talked to Mike Hagman about it, and he says, I don't want speed bumps because they're gonna, it's gonna, we have enough trouble plowing that area anyway than be able to The only problem with the speed bump, and I only know, is Molly Village has speed humps all over the place. Every time, if a truck or like a pickup truck that has stuff in the back, it's, it's very loud. I know, because I drove over with the ambulance and everything, and the ambulance flies, or even if you do ten miles an hour, it's still very loud. But that's, but we can, I can look into that.
Chief, what about visiting the owner of eight hundred North Pearl and having them put out a note or an email to all the employees in there?
We can, we
That's Abel.
You know, he's, he's pretty good, he's, you know, but again, it's their property.
Is the problem the people accelerating through the turn? I mean, will the, will the stop sign help with
It's steep, so you have to, I can see what, you know, they, they're picking up speed to go up that hill.
Right, and they're not stopping.
Yeah.
And not stopping. So, the stop sign should theoretically help with some of it if they stop.
You would hope.
And then if they stop it at the Kingston stop sign as well. I think what you're saying is they don't always stop there as well.
They both are.
Well, that's Because the, the renting space, their tenants, they don't care. They're like, you know, whatever happens, they're dealing with their, they're just driving through and they're going through it at a quick speed.
But if we can get the stop sign and then enforcement, eventually, they're gonna have to stop.
I, I thought this earlier today. I'd be happy to like, you know, if they're willing to put the things up at the evening, I could throw their, I live right there. I could throw the stuff across the front, I could throw their stuff across the back to cut down the evening stuff, the evening, certainly weekend stuff.
Because they're off the, I mean, I think from what I've seen, their office hours are like nine to five or seven.
I'm, I'm not sure they're off the, I mean, because it's, I know they work different. I mean, the numbers don't seem to be as many
But, but they may not work up the top. If, if, if there's not that many people going, thinking about, out, out the downside, because that's more the issue, right? I mean, it's more Well, I guess that's the question. What exactly is the issue with exiting onto Broadway?
Well, the problem is, they want, no, they want to open, what they're talking about is opening up the, the road. There used to be a road on the north side of Park Lot that went down by where
To Broadway.
The Broadway, right, where Crown Castle and
Isn't that where the retinols?
The right
No, it's
But I don't even know who owns that road, you know.
It's like a path now.
Yeah, it's, they, they closed it all up. I mean, I don't even know if you can even fit a car down there.
Not right now, you couldn't, back in the day.
What were you talking about, picking up what?
Well, so, I, we live right there, so why we have to like, if, if, if there's like areas they can put out, I'd be happy to put them out at night, them out at the bottom.
I think one of those kind of cases, we wouldn't be able to let you do that, but I appreciate their effort.
What, what about, I was just kinda throwing it out there, is having some type of gate there that is open for them during business hours? And that, once it's done, you close it, lock it up, so now there's no more access from five until whatever time in the morning
Well, again, that's why I was asking the question. That's the root problem, which is something.
Well, the problem is, they're still gonna exit and speed when they exit. I mean, you know, there won't be, because if, if nobody's there, then they won't be going through the gate. You know, if you close a gate, what's, I, I mean, I mean, if there's not, if nobody's there at that time, but if there is, you know, they're gonna, the time they're gonna do is when they're working, actually, more when they exit work is what the problem is.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
Do you see a lot of traffic after five o'clock or at park at six o'clock?
Well, it just opened up, so it's only been open. There are definitely people walk down
Really, you said something about eleven o'clock at night?
That's when I walk, and I, I worry that, you know, at eleven o'clock at night, if people are still coming in and out of there, it's dark, you know.
Oh, and, and, and the police come in one way, they can leave the other way, I'm sure.
Right. The, the other thing I would say to that is, I feel like it might, with that access opening up, might open, for lack of better words, like a can of worms for just a random person that says, I don't wanna go this way, so I'm gonna speed through here knowing that I can quickly go down this quick access road and get to, you know, wherever I need to go, or somebody's alluding to somebody and decides they're gonna go down our road at, in an hour at night to where people might be still walking around, or, you know, overall not safe for them to be going down that way. I can understand for the tenants that might be in there, and the employees that might be in there, but I, I do feel like if people start seeing that, they're gonna say, oh, well, here's another way that I can get to wherever I need to go or where I wanna go, and they're gonna go in that direction. You know, we're gonna see more traffic going that way, when, to be quite honest with you, it's been very nice how quiet it's been on that dead-end road, unfortunately, now kind of doesn't become a dead-end anymore.
And I guess my other concern when we speak is, you know, will that open up the apartment wanting to open up that other gate?
No. They, they, they did, because they, they put the gate up themselves because cars were going down Hendrick and going straight through to Poplex, and they're the ones that did it. They'll never open that up again.
Well, I don't know, is it worth asking him about shutting it down at five o'clock, or, and then looking into the speed bumps as well?
We can talk to, it's, it's okay with the board, it's okay with Ryan, I can go down and talk to Abel tomorrow. And let, let, let everybody know.
I don't think so, it should be definitely something just a little bit. I like the idea about the, the letter to the, to the tenants though, too.
If you're saying a portion, are you saying like the roads here and then Kingston here, and a portion of the top of the road belongs to the village?
Where the sidewalk, near the sidewalk, that would be our right-of-way.
Yeah.
So, what would stop us? Closing it off?
What you're saying, oh, closing it off, I don't know. Do you have to give them access, or can we put our own gate up there?
That's what I mean.
And shut it on our, you know, ourselves?
I don't know if we actually, that's a Steve question. Steve?
I have no idea. I mean, I, is, is it personal property owned by eight hundred North Pearl? We can't pickate up, do they have the right to access to that, to that street? Is it, I, you know, I would defer not only to the, to the police department, but also the fire department in terms of access. I'm wondering if that's an issue as well.
Well, it's closed off for a couple of years.
Yeah, just the same. I, I don't know what access issues there are, and I don't, I don't know who owns or doesn't own the, the access points.
If we own the top, say, four feet of that street, would we be able to block it off ourselves? I mean, we're not cutting them off access to the property. They can access it from other locations. It's just with closing it off, going up to Kingston.
Because our sidewalk is there.
Steve, are there being existing easement?
No, I have no idea. I don't know what the, I don't know what the, the title is. I don't know what the easements are. I mean, before you do anything, you'd have to have a title search done to see what, if any, right-of-way or easement the village may or may not have granted to them. For, apparently, they have a curb cut.
Yeah.
Right? So, you'd have to find out, even if you own the property, if you granted, if the village at some point in time in the past granted them an easement or right-of-way. Unless there are restrictions on that, there, there's really very little you can do without their consent.
We're gonna do the survey.
Do that again?
We're gonna do the survey of our property.
Just to make sure that
Because it, because it abuts that property. We'll see.
Yeah, good. Alright, well, in the meantime, they'll talk to them tomorrow and see if there's any resolution.
I'll let you know. I'll, I'll, I'll give you a call there, let you know.
Okay.
Anybody else? Alright. Quarterville, ninety, brother?
What, now we do the, the meeting minutes?
Oh, that's on my thing right now, yeah.
I will see you then.
Oh, sorry, I gave it a, do you hear, do you want the?
Sorry, let's keep it going.
Uh, no, here.
And you said you had a change or something?
I, I I, I, yeah, it's, it's already on there.
So, those minutes are the corrected version?
What, no, that's, that's tonight.
So, what had to be corrected?
I, I, I got, I already got, that's, that's the, when we get through the warrants.
But this is wrong, you said.
But we're gonna, yeah, but you can still approve the minutes because then we're gonna correct the, the warrant after that, because we can't
Undo the
The new minutes already have the correction on there.
So, we're approving the minutes?
Approve the minutes, and then I'm gonna correct the warrant, the warrant, it's on, unless you want, I mean, we can amend the
Then we just amend the minute?
Before we
Yeah, when we do that, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm just doing what I was told.
What needs to be amended?
On, on the, the warrant, for the twenty-six warrant, the encumbrance, general was two hundred and twenty-two, twenty, two thou, two hundred and seventy-two thousand and two dollars and seventy cents. Water was twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and twelve cents. Sewer was seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents, totaling three hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Oh, and it should have read that's what, that's what was written. It should have been general, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and three dollars and six cents. Water was twenty-nine thousand, forty-eight dollars and twelve cents, and sewer was seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. That should have totaled three hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
Alright, done. The July meeting minutes that you gave us, the number are nowhere close to what you just read. Ending balance on the minutes is a hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-five and eighty cents, and you just said it's over two hundred thousand, three hundred dollars.
Why not with minutes from last meeting?
Well, just from the last meeting, one, one month ago.
What you checked today?
It was organizational meeting.
That's what I got here. So, this, these minutes, what you said we were mending, but the number you said aren't anywhere close to what you just told me.
Are you sure that wasn't from the, from the meeting a month ago? That, that was the one we had where the, we had, the warrant was wrong?
Right, Bill said we had a
That was a month ago.
Oh, that's, oh, I'm sorry. I thought it, it was just me. They just told me there was a problem, and we
No, that was two meetings ago, yeah.
Alright.
Alright, so, we need a motion to approve the July fifth meeting minutes.
Those are fine.
Those should be fine.
Yeah.
Some of them.
All favor, close, right down. When you do those, it's gonna be the June, whatever the second meeting of June was.
Okay.
June twenty-first. That's, I apologize, I didn't see, it's, it's June twenty-first meeting. It's, it actually says it on the thing. I apologize, I didn't, I just thought it was the last meeting.
Okay. We're gonna correct warrant number twenty-six encumbrance due to a typo originally shown on six of twenty-one, twenty-two to meet minutes as follows. General, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and three dollars and six cents. Water, twenty-nine thousand, forty-eight dollars and twelve cents. Sewer, seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents, totaling three hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Then we also have to void out check number one thousand, or correction, one, three, two, three, five, for five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty cents. Replacement check, one thousand, one, one, three, two, six, four, for two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. We have to void check number one, three, two, eight, six, for four thousand, two, six hundred, four thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents. It was a duplicate payment. We have to void one, three, two, nine, seven, for seven hundred and fifty dollars. It was a duplicate payment. Then we have warrant number four.
There we go. How are all these happening?
I, somehow Bill paid, I don't, I don't know why we had to do the other two, but the two voided checks, they were Bill had two invoices for the same thing, and he, he wrote, wrote, put them both in the system. Warrant number four, general, fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and nine cents. Water
Is this new for now?
This is now. This is, they got it all in there, all one thing, you wanna We can, yes, when we do that first, and then
Second.
All favor?
Alright.
Warrant number four.
Warrant number four. Fifty-four thousand, six, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and nine Fifty-four thousand, six, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and nine cents. Water, fifteen thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and four cents. Sewer, three thousand, seven dollars and fifty cents, totaling seventy-three thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-three cents. Payroll number four, one hundred thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-five cents, and there's no.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that one more time?
One that, one hundred thousand, five hundred and twenty-four, eighty-five.
Thank you.
You got the email about this. Um, there was a ninety Broadway. Um, the owner came in, asked to turn on all the water, but except that there was two units that shouldn't have been, the water was turned on for, so they got charged for all the water, um, for all the buildings when they shouldn't have gotten charged for um, the water for um, for the two buildings, the two unoccupied places that should not have been charged.
But did they just get a minimum bill?
Yeah.
For two hundred and whatever.
Well, it's it's seven, because the seven hundred dollars altogether, because it's a commercial. It's not, it's not the, it's not the, it's a commercial account. They're they're, they commercials get charged a higher rate. So if they didn't, you know, they.
So did we physically turn those meters on?
No. But they, because they they were putting the meters in themselves, they haven't, the plumbers put the meters in, but.
So why is it up to us to to reverse them?
Because they they should, those weren't, shouldn't have been like, because they're they're not occupied and they weren't, they weren't put on, turned on.
So is there water service at those vacant units?
That there's no meters. The meter, they have the meters, but they're not installed.
So what do we have to do?
Um, we're gonna correct the invoice resulting in incorrect billing of five hundred and eighty-two dollars for water charges, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents for sewer charges. So we we were asking to deduct the five hundred and eighty-two off their bill and two thirty-two eighty off their bill.
Uh, the next one is gonna be unfold for the next meeting of one after, because that's not here for my table.
DPW is requesting to purchase a pickup truck. There's money in the account. There's over sixty thousand dollars in the account. They're requesting to purchase a pickup truck with all the plows and everything for forty-nine thousand, eighty-two dollars, and it's under state contract.
What does that last word say under plow? Two hundred and seventy-five dollars?
Oh, don't.
Oh, maybe.
It's it's either delivery or the the documentation, you know, like the. It's a. It's, um, it's a Ram two-five-hundred, tradesman, four-by-four, through cab. It's similar to the one that Mike has, but just the next version up.
This is used for.
They, um.
Always surplus.
Now, um, they're gonna take the one plow, one truck is gonna go to the water department. That was my understanding.
So was the sixty thousand, was the sixty thousand that was budgeted, was that?
It's in the savings account.
Okay. Did they, did they pretty much expect that this was gonna be?
Yeah, Mike, Bill asked not to put it in the budget just to keep the taxes, or I I believe that's what, because we knew he had the money in the savings account.
And this is for plowing?
It's for plowing and just a pickup truck for the, because the truck they have now has it's it's up there.
It's not that hat.
It's it's a little older, it's beat up, it's seen better days.
Which which one is the oldest?
The white one?
The fit truck.
The one that is currently sitting behind Mike's because it won't start or run.
So how are we getting that, giving that to the water department?
It's just a state.
Fixing the starter.
Well, I'd like to know how much that's gonna cost before you decide to turn it over to the water department.
Okay.
It's gonna start milking us for a bunch of money. They haven't had it now, so.
I mean, I mean, I, this was, this was, I didn't have, you know, that's, I'm just telling what.
You think it's just a starter? I agree. I think before we add a vehicle, I think we should know its condition, its value, and the cost of.
Yeah, like, I'm not opposed to getting a new truck. I just don't know that I want to keep the old truck without knowing what's gonna happen with it.
Okay, I mean, I get to, I can relate it.
This is forty-nine thousand, eighty-two dollars. There's sixty thousand in the vehicle savings, so there's plenty there to cover it. This had been talked about at the budget time, like Don said, we took it out of the budget, but Bill knew he had money in the savings for it.
Some hope.
Second.
All favor?
Okay, next up is Chief Ogden.
So, uh, a couple of us talked with Megan, Tim, in a meeting about a couple of different things. Uh, one of the issues that has arisen is with the surplus of Class A interior firefighters that we've brought in over the past three months. Uh, we have turnout gear that is now outside of the NFPA tenure range for being considered quality. So it's expired. Uh, the list that I sent you guys, um, the red is all stuff that has expired. The yellow is stuff that's expiring next year, and the green is stuff that's currently good. Um, what the names is the active roster, and then the one that's not is our current reserve stock of stuff that's in the downstairs room. Um, we talked, the total for, to get everybody into gear that is up to date is forty-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-six cents. We in the fire department don't have that entirety in our whole budget, uh, without depleting a lot of stuff, including future purchases or equipment and repair. Um, we brought up at the budget meeting about twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of other stuff that we thought about purchasing this year between throw bags, a trailer, ice water rescue suits, and like an airbag for, uh, vehicle extrication and whatnot. Um, if the village is able to or willing to additionally support twenty-five thousand dollars worth, we could use twenty thousand and the remaining six hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-six cents out of our existing budget. And then we would just be looking for the additional twenty-five thousand dollars worth of help, so our budget can still function throughout the rest of the year, being two months into the fiscal year.
But something just occurred to me as you were talking. If we're doing three sets of turnout gear a year, how are we so far behind with ten years out of, because we've been doing this probably since I've been there. So how are we, how are we so far behind with the ones that are out of date?
I don't know if the older ones have been being removed when they should have been. Um, and then ultimately, I think what we've been doing has been fine for the one to two members that we've been bringing in this year. But because we've brought in twelve members that need turnout here, it's jumped the numbers up so far ahead of what we've been able to maintain. It's much more a factor of bringing in twelve members that can actively go into burning buildings and extrications, as opposed to you potentially bring in one to two of those members six, seven, eight years ago that drew those, and I think we're only doing two sets of gear for a little while. I think recently we bumped it to three, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know roughly. So I think it's just this situation that's arisen has really kind of stuck us in this situation.
And maybe it's happened the whole time back then.
We have a number of, uh, numbers right now that actually don't have any gear that's that's up to them.
There's at least one, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah, where the turnout gear is is outdated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's really just if someone was to get hurt, um, and not only comes back on view, but you guys, as well as the Board of Fire Commissioners slash Board.
Has there been a conversation with Bill about?
I haven't talked to Bill. Uh, we've been kind of busy with work, or I haven't been able to sneak in.
And allocated, so I'm sure it could cover twenty-five thousand.
So what out of your wish list?
Did we remove?
Yeah.
Um, so the three biggest things are the ice water rescue suits. That was about eighty-five hundred dollars. Um, a trailer, which is about six thousand, which we kind of discussed today, and to, you know how we, Megan, Tim, we talked about giving the squad to the DPW. Um, we talked, I talked with Mike, and he actually we kind of tossed around ideas. They have the safety trailer, and if they didn't need that, because that has all the water equipment for if there's water main breaks or anything like that, they'd be willing to give that to us, and then that's the trailer that we would need. So that would potentially save us the six thousand dollars there. And then the airbag kit is obviously nice to have, but I think that was probably like the top, top of the line. We probably don't need one that's to that extent.
But if you give them the squad, like I spoke to Ryan today, and they won't have a vehicle ready available for next year.
Yep.
So you'll be a year without, or are you gonna wait a year?
Potentially, or we could wait the year. Um, and then if there's any concern with towing two out of the three chase vehicles, I have to check with Mike to see if it has towing capability. But we do have some stuff that could tow a trailer, and if we had to wait a year, then we have to wait a year, is what it is, and it's still a vehicle for us. Um, and it's DPW still has the trailer, like.
Make it for a little while. So we just need a motion for the twenty-five.
Did you do those numbers exactly? Like, we give you twenty-five, the rest of it is figured out.
Yeah, so the the grand total was forty-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-six cents out of the quotes that I gave you guys. And if you give the twenty-five thousand, we can cover the rest out of our equipment budget.
It's still gonna have to all be approved by the board though, because it's.
All the equipment.
The actual, where the money comes from, we can leave that up to Bill, you know, there's just gonna come out of the budget.
So we're just making a motion to approve all the.
All the purchases, and then we can.
I think we need to put it on the record that we're gonna give twenty-five thousand.
Oh, yeah, okay. I mean, but that's, but we saw they approved everything.
All right, so the motion would be approving the turnout gear for a total of forty-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-six cents, with the village putting twenty-five thousand towards that.
And us covering the rest out of our budget.
Yep.
This is your budget.
Correct, this is your budget.
I'll make that motion.
All favor?
That's all we have in the budget or on the agenda. Um, just to let everybody know, we've been advised by the IRS that they increased the mileage from fifty-eight cents, fifty-eight and a half cents to sixty-two and a half cents.
What did we approve, fifty-eight?
Yes, well, it's, we we approved, I, we approved the follow, we've always had it, we approve whatever the IRS.
But in the minutes, it said fifty-eight point five cents. So do we need to just amend that somehow, or?
We can approve the, I mean, I, we can approve it again, but we have a motion, we have, originally we said we just, we would follow whatever the IRS.
Right, which is, so that fifty-eight cents should not have even been in there, because now that it is, I would think it has to be reflective of the sixty-two and a half cents.
All right, so do I make, so I'll make a motion to approve.
No, I think we just say we're gonna increase the per IRS.
Per IRS.
Yeah. We did.
Second.
All favor? We've got the pet tracks thing, is that?
That's just for your information. That's already been approved and everything. That's just your copy of everything. And they're gonna be getting, the fire department was giving their copies to nail out to the members.
Tuesday night concert, and we'll have orphan trucks this week than last week. Thank you for your efforts. Um, good time, good music, good food. Um, it's gonna be ninety-something, but you know what, it's always cool underneath the trees in the grove, so it'll be a good night. All right, if that's it, more questions for John?
Some hope.
Second.
All favor?
All right.
Your dad has got a question.
Can you hear me? I can't hear you.
Are you charging to me, Diane?
I am. Um, you and your family have unclaimed funds at the office of the State Controller.
Oh, we do?
Yes, you do. Your wife, Claire W., um, Stephen, then S J. and S W.
How many millions am I owed?
Well, I do get a finder's fee if it's millions, but other than that, I can't. I don't know, it doesn't give, um, it only says who it's from. It doesn't give amount, so you guys have to look into that yourself. But I just want to let you know that it's there.
So what do I do? Do I contact the Comptroller's Office?
Um, if you want the, um, unclaimed funds at the office of the State Controller, then just look up your name.
I'll mark it down.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you.
I think you dropped something without those guys having to just sit there like every morning.